Okay, we're going to call to order the special meeting of the Rochester City Council of Monday, January 31st, 2022. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson. Sage.
We have a quorum. So, welcome, everybody. We're here tonight to discuss the City of Rochester draft master plan. What we're going to do, we're going to have a presentation from Rowan Brady from Beckett and Raider, kind of where we are and kind of some of the changes that the Planning Commission made. Then, tonight, again, we are not having a formal vote to accept this. This is still a draft thing where we're talking about. The council is going to talk about things they may be interested in talking about, things they may be interested in changing. If we do decide to make some changes, it's going to be kind of a head nod vote, and then it's going to go to them. But all final votes will be in the open meeting at our city council meeting when we bring this up. But we just have to give, if there's some, you know, issue that we need to give him direction, whether to put that in or to not put it in. But again, nothing is going to be decided tonight. Okay, so that's kind of where we are. And just to give you a quick thing, with the Planning Commission, a number of us, I think you guys saw that maybe, had sent in ideas. We talked about it. We mostly agreed on all those. Those are what were put in. But again, that was what was sent out, but it has to go back to the Planning Commission and ultimately to this board for final approval. So, if there's any questions before we start, we'll turn it over to Rowan, and so you can give us kind of a presentation of where we are. So, welcome to our meeting tonight, and thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bixson, and thank you, council, for having us attend. It's always a great pleasure to kind of present the findings of the master plan and have the highlights moving forward. We'll go ahead and get started. We want to move to the next slide.
There you go.
So, looking at what is a master plan? It's a long-term planning document that's generally covering the next 20 to 25 years of the community. It's a community-driven policy document that's guided by a vision statement, and ultimate implementation will be changes to your zoning ordinance. So, the zoning ordinance is the policy framework for your community, specifying building form and building aesthetics, and also land use framework. And the master plan examines natural features, housing, commercial and industrial land uses, transportation, parks and recreation, and a few other topics. Your last master plan was adopted in 2014, and per state law, it is required to be reviewed every five years. Next slide. So, the summary of changes from the 2014 master plan is we updated the vision statements, we added sustainability and parking to the master plan. All of the data was updated with 2020 figures per the U.S. Constitution. Every 10 years, there's a decennial census, which is a complete count of the entire U.S. population. Those figures were updated with that data. We updated recommendations for changes to the zoning ordinance through the zoning plan, and we added a new action plan with new tools such as community engagement and monitoring progress moving forward. Next slide. So, the process for writing the master plan included a background research process conducted by the consultant team, and then we used a steering committee to dive into four additional topics, which included housing, sustainability, parking, and downtown connections. Staff reviewed documents throughout the process and provided updates and comments. Draft presented to the DDA, and then the Planning Commission reviewed the draft and ultimately approved for distribution through the 63-day review. Next slide?
Quick question.
Yeah.
A couple slides earlier, it said, "Master Plan 2025." The draft I had said 2022. What does that mean, 2025, Master Plan 2025 versus...the year is 2022.
So, 2022 will generally be the adoption year, and then 2025...is there a specific location where that date was?
It was on...
You know, this is on our old master plan. This is the current one, so I'm thinking that's where that image came from.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, that image.
Yep. So, the 2022 on the current plan available for draft, this is reference to the year of adoption.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Next slide. So, the community engagement process included a city survey that the city conducts every few years. Those findings were incorporated into the master plan. And we also had a steering committee that reviewed the drafts monthly. And then we held two in-person engagement sessions and one virtual engagement session, which I know some of the councillors attended. And so, the in-person engagement sessions included some redevelopment site concepts that are included in the draft document, highlights of the master plan and results, and then some visioning where we reviewed the visions for the plan and then updated those findings at the end of the plan and currently approved for distribution. Next slide. So, I'm just going to go over some of the key findings from the master plan, starting off with housing. So, that graphic on the left looks at housing affordability. The pie chart on the left looks at owner housing affordability, and the one on the right is renter affordability. That dark orange slice is those who fall into an affordable housing situation. So, we define housing affordability as if you spend 30% or less of your income on housing expenses. So, this can include mortgage, utilities, renters, obviously monthly rent. And so, the affordability for owners is substantially higher than those for renters. That green slice is unaffordable, which is defined as 30% to 50% of your income. And then severely unaffordable is more than 50% of your income. So, you can see that over a quarter of renters do live in severely unaffordable housing units, indicating that there is a mismatch between your rental housing market and the people who are living in those units. On the right, we look at housing preferences. So, the distribution of housing types ranging from large lot, single-family, which is that dark blue bar. That green bar is small lot, single-family, residential, moving into townhomes, which is the brown, multifamily, which is the darkest blue kind of near the top, and then mobile home or other. That bar on the left is the national housing stock. The bar in the middle is Rochester's current housing stock. My apologies, Rochester is farthest to the right, and the middle housing bar is the average future national demand. So, that bar in the middle is generally what kind of where the nation's preferences are shifting to. And so, if you look, there's a substantial increase in the demand for small lot, single-family homes compared to the bar on the left. Also, an increase in townhomes, an increase for multifamily states about the same. And if you compare that middle bar to the one on the right, Rochester is actually doing pretty well when it comes to having a mix of housing types. You have more than enough, or you have a substantial number of multifamily housing units, townhomes, small lot, single-family is generally where that gap is. So, you can see that the future demand for small lot, single-family is going to be a little bit higher than Rochester's current mix.
Can I ask a question?
So, within the multifamily, or maybe where do we put senior living? So, you know, our Sunrise Senior Living, Cedar Brook, where are those numbers? Are they in multifamily?
Yep. So, multifamily refers to its typologies. That's if there's two or more units in one structure. Senior living is generally more about kind of who's living in those units. So, senior living, often there's an age restriction to people who can live in an apartment building. So, the multifamily structure would include senior living, which has, if the structure had two or more units.
Okay.
And I'd say a financial limit around here, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Some senior living units do have income restrictions.
Well, no, I meant that the cost is so high.
Yeah.
Next slide. So, moving into community sustainability, which was a new chapter added from the 2014 master plan to this master plan. Some findings of the community sustainability chapter include impervious surfaces. So, 36% of the city is impervious. Impervious surface is defined as pavement, rooftops, anything that doesn't allow water to infiltrate into the ground. This percentage is the second highest around surrounding communities, and national data shows that floodplains are insufficient at measuring flood risk. So, while a lot of planners and engineers use FEMA floodplains to designate what areas are flooding, it's actually showing that these areas underestimate where flooding is going to happen. And so, in combination with high impervious surfaces, there's a substantial higher flood risk in our community, especially along those FEMA designated boundaries. Looking at open space, nearly 100% of residents of Rochester live within a half a mile of a park, which is fantastic. That really speaks well to the accessibility for all residents to open space and park facilities. Moving into natural features protection, about 30% of the tree, Rochester has about 30% tree canopy coverage, and you are a tree community, Tree City USA. And then SEMCOG's region-wide goal tree canopy coverage is 40%. So, there's about a 10% gap between existing conditions and future goals.
When we looked at that report, the 30% report, because we are considered an urban city, that was, we were told that was a very good number. We will, we will be hard-pressed to ever achieve 40%. I know that's a SEMCOG, which is a larger area, but with our downtown and housing, we would not get to the 40%. Was their, their opinion from the professionals.
Is that a reflection you would like in the master plan, does that clarification?
Yes.
Yes, please. And Nick Banda, or I can get you a copy of the report that we got from them, which was the tree canopy report.
Yeah, that would be great. We can cite that as well. So, moving into watershed health, so the Clinton River is listed as an area of concern. So, Eagle designates waterways based on several factors. So, if there are high concentrations of pollutants or lots of facilities that discharge into the river system, a river or a body of water may be listed as an area of concern. But there have been grants that have been issued for the Clinton River restoration, so it is moving in a positive direction. Renewable energy. Michigan is one of the leading states in the Midwest for renewable energy, especially around solar and wind production. Obviously, in an urban community, solar is the predominant renewable energy source. And the city recently installed solar panels at the Public Works Building, and the fire station also has solar panels. So, next slide, please. Another one of the subcommittees looked at downtown connections, specifically non-motorized downtown connections. So, if you look on the map on the left, we identified three primary areas for increasing downtown connections. That one all the way on the left goes from the city hall, which is where we are now, throughout kind of the outer edge of downtown and then to the Clinton River. This is the bike-focused area connecting the Paint Creek to the Clinton River Trail, and the gray change is suitable for those bike-focused infrastructure. And then it connects those two trails along downtown. And then those lighter pink, kind of moving inwards toward downtown, are what we're defining as bike-friendly. So, we're emphasizing bike activity on the outer edge, but these alleys are also going to be bike-friendly because they have slow automobile traffic and slow speeds. Design interventions for improving non-motorized connections are mainly centered around driveways and intersections, improving sightlines, improving safety. And then Main Street is going to remain pedestrian-focused. Bicycle traffic through Main Street would just add congestion and is probably unnecessary, so we're going to emphasize limited bicycle traffic right on Main Street. Pedestrian-scale designs, so brick crosswalks and human-scale building messing, which is predominantly what downtown is currently. And then we're going to continue the design elements for Rochester's existing downtown south to the Clinton River. So, as development might pop up kind of on the southern edge of downtown, the designs will remain consistent all the way from where your majority of development downtown is throughout the south to the Clinton River.
I'd just like to say that this presentation, part of it was delivered to the DDA, so the DDA had input into this as well.
Good.
Next slide, please. And then finally, the last subcommittee looked at parking. So, the consultant team included a parking consultant, Walker Consulting, and they looked at parking and also interviewed a few parking officials to really get a good understanding of publicly-owned parking facilities in the city of Rochester. So, they found that parking revenues fell short of expenditures in 2020. 83% of residents feel that the parking isn't good or excellent. Parking complaints also have decreased recently, and parking design, especially the sign and landscaping around parking facilities, is a major strength. But however, we were asked to kind of assess if parking is something that could be privatized in the near future, but revenues are not strong enough currently to privatize public parking, so it's not a realistic opportunity at this time.
Yeah, Rowan, when I was reading the draft, and again, this was done before we approved the $1.25 and some other things, so you might want to update that to reflect the city council action on parking the 4G meters. I know they talked about recommending those in there. There's a whole, almost like a page and a half of recommendations. We did approve some of those.
Okay, excellent. We will update the master plan with that recent action.
I have a comment there. You know, the parking revenue short of expenditures in 2020, I think it needs to be noted that that's due to COVID. It's not like we were, you know, trending in that direction. We were close to break even, and then COVID happened. So, I, I think, I mean, it might be intuitive, but I think it should be stated.
Sure.
I agree.
Okay, next slide, please. And during the 63-day review, we did receive comments from Oakland County. They did have some suggestions for updated future land use categories, some changes to properties that have currently been identified in the future land use property, predominantly on the southeast corner. They recommended that be changed to recreation and open space. And then we are also adding the special projects from the 2014 master plan to the future land use map as well.
Yep.
So, also on the Oakland County comments, they also talked about adding the brownfield initiatives and what we're, you know, we have an active brownfield site. There were some comments on brownfield. So, is that also going to be incorporated?
So, it won't be incorporated onto the future land use map, but in the implementation chapter, there is a list of tools that the city can use to achieve the vision of the master plan. That's where the brownfield sections will go. It's, brownfields is primarily a tool for redevelopment, so it would fit well in that section.
Okay.
Next slide. And finally, the adoption process. So, Planning Commission recommends the master plan for distribution. City Council also recommends the plan for distribution, which picks off the 63-day public review period, which we are currently in and nearing the end of. After that session is done, Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, which is currently scheduled for February 7th. At that meeting, members of the public are welcome to provide comments. And then after that, Planning Commission will approve the document to go to council, and then council will have final approval, and that meeting is currently scheduled for February 28th. Any questions on that process? If any edits do come up in that final approval meeting, let's say there's something that you council wants changed, you will approve the document on those conditions. So, if there's sections that need to be, you know, usually at this meeting, it's small grammatical things, not substantial changes. And again, that document would be approved contingent on those changes.
Any further questions for now?
Next slide.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions for the planner right now? Okay. All right. So, I guess we throw it open to the council now. I don't know if we, you know, some things to talk about, the implementation strategies and opportunities, or just whatever. People have comments, questions? Mark, go ahead.
I, I, you know, I went through this and, you know, I didn't read it word for it, summarized it, but...
It'll be quizzed.
Yeah, there'll be a quiz later. I, my understanding, you and Steve, you or Steve, were going to give a summary also of what the Planning Commission did or some highlights that we should be looking at before we jump in. So, I don't know if we were going to do that or wait till Steve gets here.
Um, we can do that. I think, were some of the changes in, in the packet of what we did, of what the Planning Commission did?
We received them as part of the packet, yes, or the areas.
So, there was a few things in there. One, there was some looking at some private properties and kind of what, what you could do with those. And the Planning Commission felt like those should be taken out because we shouldn't be putting something out there that had private property on there. So, we took out a number of those, and those had been talked about in the visioning session. So, that was one thing that came out. And then there was some, there was, there was a thing in there to take out the special projects part, and then we took that out because people on the Planning Commission felt like we still needed that tool. You know, we can always say no to that at the Planning Commission and at the city council. So, we took that out. And then there was just some other smaller kind of things on, you know, tiny houses and just a lot of little details that we just felt like didn't really fit into that. And so, we kind of adopted those. And again, that's kind of where, and I mean, it wasn't like a massive change, but those were kind of the two areas of change. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So, this one, the question's for Nick, and this is one I brought up before. The current master plan on the website, which was adopted November 1st, 2014, is called Master Plan 2025. So, that was 11 years ago. What's this one going to be called, Nick? Master Plan 30...
I think 2022. I don't know why, that's how it was done, but back then, that's how they did them, I guess. So, it should just be 2022, and it looks forward for five years.
Okay. Yeah, that, okay. Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Councilmember Harrison?
Mayor, just back to the future land use revisions that you removed, did you include or leave in the suggestions for the Harrison property, the Harrison building that's been top of mind for everyone? Is that still addressed?
Um, I don't think we, that's the school building, correct?
Yeah.
It's like Harrison building, what?
Sorry, I really like that name.
I know. When you know the story, yeah, I like it, too.
I don't think that was addressed specifically.
It was not specifically addressed in the future land use or implementation.
So, that was, yeah.
But I did notice Oakland County commented on that building specifically.
Right. I wonder if that's something that we want to include, even if it's our resolution for the building.
I don't know.
I would like to, only based off of what is stated under historic preservation. I think that is something that, as in-depth that we went with what this community means with the historic preservation that we have of everything and what it means, I think it would be important to place that somewhere in here, along with the oldest, oldest residents that's here and probably some of our, in the historic district as well, those individual parcels. Because if it's part of the master plan, I mean, so it'll be top of mind when people are looking at this as making decisions.
Right, especially since we've just, we're redoing the master plan right now.
Correct.
The update.
Exactly. Especially since it's public property, or it was.
Correct. And I think the other thing that the Planning Commission struggled with a little bit was, you know, is, is this just suggestions?
Right.
And do we want to suggest, you know, do we want to suggest stuff that we really, you know, this isn't like a law. This is, so it's like, well, do you just leave it in, but you, but if we don't want it, do you take it out? But, you know, there was kind of back and forth a little bit, like, well, it doesn't hurt to leave it in, but then we felt like, well, if we left it in, then that gave developers something to say, well, it's in here, then maybe we should do it. So, I mean, that, that was kind of the, a little bit of the back and forth. And so, some of the things we ended up taking out, we just felt like we didn't want that in there. But, you know, that was kind of a give and take. It's kind of a gray area. What is this document exactly? Is it?
Well, it's, it's a strategy.
It controls zoning, though. It controls the zoning of our community. That's, that's what this purpose is.
Well, right, but then there were some things that were just, um...
Well, take, take the solar panels. I mean, I, you know, that takes council action through updating ordinances, but I think, you know, discussion needs to be in the master plan regarding solar panels.
Could we put the resolution in the appendix as a reference?
Yeah, I think we should definitely put our, our resolution.
That's where we put the visioning statement.
Yeah, yeah.
Lead caps.
Yeah.
Yep. So, Mayor, like, under the, on page 36, we're under those planning implications. So, it just said, "Partner with organizations that provide a rent-to-own program." I think this is what you're referring to. How, how does that fit into, and how, you can't, that's not as, anything that's tied to zoning.
Right. And we, and we didn't put that in because we just said that's not, that's not our role.
Right.
You know, that's for the private sector. We don't need to have that in there, kind of thing. So, those are the kind of things we took out.
It's nothing we would be providing.
Right.
A question for Rowan. On page 22, it references, "The 57 teardowns over the past seven years represent 1% of the overall housing stock. This is hardly an existential threat, the city's older structures." What prior seven years is that? Because that, that number seems low considering the recent teardowns we've seen. Page 22. I don't know if it's from 2018 and beyond, because before that, they referenced the 2018 study. So, I don't know if Nick knows a more recent number in there, but can we just at least reference what prior seven years they're referring to? And is that number still correct?
I don't know. We can find that out.
Yeah, I can get that clarification.
Okay, thank you. And then when you were talking about rental housing, you went quick, and I, you said affordability was 30% or less. Then I thought you said severely unaffordable was 50% or more of your income. And what was unaffordable?
30% to 50%.
Yeah, 30% to 50.
Okay. Thank you.
But that was actually almost five years ago now, from 2018.
Yes, that's using 2018 ACS estimate.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I got a comment from a resident today that wanted us to update the, there's a map from 2014, and the values were 20, maybe 18 about our values. It's a green map, and we're going to, I asked Michelle today to update that with the newest numbers that we can get from the county, which sets our housing values because it's highly undervalued from the old map. So, she's going to figure that out, and we'll have that the Planning Commission meeting.
Yes. In the 2014 master plan, the previous planning consultant did a lot of demographic maps that were not updated as part of this process. That's one map that has been identified that would be suitable for update using the most recent census data.
But if we update the green one, wouldn't we want to update all of them? Because this is the medium housing value. Wouldn't we want to update the gross rent as well? It looks like they're all from 2018, or these two, at least.
The McKenna ones you're referencing?
Mm-hmm, on page 25.
Yeah.
Any map that has McKenna in the corner will be from the last 2014 plan.
Okay.
Yes, we can certainly update those demographic figures.
Right.
Yeah, because, I mean, things have changed in the last...
Quite a bit, right?
Five years. You know, another thing we talked about in the Planning Commission, it's like severely unaffordable. You know, again, we were kind of like, well, is that really our issue? It's good to have that information, but really, how, how do you act on that?
And to your point, Mayor, on page 26, where they show the shifting housing preferences, this is what I see as what causes more of that, too. We're, we are taking out the small lot square footage, squeezing it down to make room for the larger and more standard to where you're going to lose the values there as well of affordable. So, and then they actually put so much more in multifamily that I think that it's, it's not much of a balance.
So, do we, so I'll just, do, do people have things they want to talk about? do people have things they want to talk about? Do we want to kind of go through?
Maybe we should take like each category. So like, we're in housing. So like any other comments, thoughts on on housing that anybody wants to talk about?
Councilmember Harrison, you brought up a good point. There was a part I thought, and it might not be in here, where they talked the the missing middle group, the townhomes, the villas. Is that in this section?
Yeah, it is.
I'm trying to find it while I'm.
I marked that page as well.
26, 27, in that range?
There's a missing middle graphic on page 21.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that was the.
Yeah. Which I find, I found that one interesting because that's, that doesn't really, you're not really a single homeowner at that point either of owning. You're more into condos and things like that. And those can be just as, those can be more expensive than single family homes.
Yeah, correct.
So.
Like their Overbrook.
Yes.
If that had gone in, those are going to be 700,000?
Well, just north of where I live in Stony Creek Ridge North is the townhomes and villas to the north and to the east are the villas or town, you know.
Yeah.
Where, and seem to be, seem to be mostly older. I don't know if it's a 55 and older community. I don't think so. But when I walk through there, it's mostly older people. But that seems to be a missing element. I think that's the only place I can recall. And do you know where there might be other ones in Rochester? Villas?
Yeah, we, well, the ones across, even from Dairy Queen. I mean, any of these condos, the Royal Park ones, I mean, they're scattered, but this here actually goes into more density, which I think that was something with the fire department. There was a concern for the density of how much we are going to take on in the smaller areas that we have. So I think it's just for planning commission and administration purposes, since you don't get every single development in here minus that are not, single, I'm talking about regular, single family builds or whatever. This is something planning commission needs to look at for any of these new developments coming in of really how are they going to tax the community? And really, how, how will the affordability factor go into whatever is, people are considering a missing middle housing? Because it's here. We have every type of housing here already. We have very low income rentals, you know, to, you know, very high end rentals. And we also have high end properties and the low end properties. So I just think it's something that we can't, we can't, like you said, Mayor, we can't control the affordability issue. Okay, that's what someone can pay is what you're going to be with, right? We have to make sure that we don't squeeze out those that have been living here forever with their homes and, you know, so other generations can come and enjoy that as well. And we can't stop market rent either, so that's what it is.
And that's the age old question for years and years is, as the houses get more expensive, which we all like, all of our property values are going up. But it does squeeze out a certain type of person who can't afford it now. So I mean, that's always an issue.
Well, I can't afford them, so it's like, you don't have to be anybody special. It just, it's, we have to, we have to try to maintain that balance there. And if, when you're walking, you'll see all these smaller, single residences that are multifamily. And then you have the apartment complexes. You have the townhome complexes. I mean, we have such a wide variety. My concern was more about the community preferences of Mill Street, Letica, and the Woodward site. Of how that was going to impact Rochester.
Page 33?
Yes, in the, in the future. So I think it's, the mix that we have is good, as long as it's all maintained and taken care of, right? But then how do we navigate into what's best for the community with what somebody wants to come in and build?
Actually, I actually thought we took out these.
It has been removed.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so those were the ones that you actually took out? Because I was actually wondering why we would put such high numbers on the height of those two for those areas.
You know, those were pulled. What is an ADU? Consider the feasibility of ADUs?
ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. So these are what you would refer to as a granny flat. That's kind of the common name for an accessory dwelling unit.
Like a house?
I like those. I think that's good.
And those were considered a new idea around the country in some areas, but I think the planning commission wanted to take that out. Is that correct?
That's a good idea.
I can look. I.
See, that's what I, I'm confused now because I'm looking at this and I think.
We've had a lot of different versions of this because I was struggling to make sure I had the right one. Maybe I don't.
Which page are you on?
Yeah, I reached out to Nick today about it, too.
So I'm reading on page 33 in the planning implications, that blue box. And under zoning, it says consider the feasibility of ADUs. And this was the version of the master plan that was sent to council when we scheduled the 63 days.
Right, so that's been out. So we need, yeah, so that was taken out.
So the consider the feasibility of ADUs was included in the plan approved for distribution. If planning commission had wanted it removed before distribution, it would have been.
Wait, this should have been the most recent updated version, though. This is the one that's on our website right now for the public to be revealing. What page are you on? 33.
Yeah, I must have an old version here somehow.
So Stuart, you think the commission wanted that out?
I can't remember exactly. Maybe when Steve comes, I can't remember the reason. Do you remember, Nick? Do you remember why we took it out?
I do. I do. And the hard part about this whole thing is there are a lot of comments along the line. But we weren't going to pay the consultant to rewrite it on every single comment. So they gathered all the comments together and will change it one time before it goes to the planning commission next Monday. But on the ADUs, it was, there are people in the community did not like the fact that you can put something in your garage and create an extra unit on the property. There's traffic problems, parking problems. We didn't want more impervious areas and the small lots. So planning commissions, it wasn't for us. It creates more intensity, so.
I think it was considered like, didn't want people like renting it out to people and things like that. So the, so the idea was a good one, I think, but and some.
It's going around the country, but it's not for our community.
Right.
I got it.
That's a thing we can certainly reflect.
Thank you, Nick.
One question that I have is, I appreciate that solar panels are addressed in the master plan. But Nick, it's my understanding that it's not addressed in our city ordinances currently. Do we need to reflect our ordinances to allow for residential solar panels on homes or buildings?
So right now, I think again, yeah, I'm sorry, the consultant, maybe, we don't, right, like, they're just another utility. We don't say you can't have them. Now, if you put it as a pre-standing unit in your backyard, that's different. But they're just on the roofs or it's, we don't have anything that says you can't do solar panels. We have them. There's people with solar panels. So, yeah, we didn't feel the need to address it because you're allowed to do it. If we wanted to eliminate them, that's different. But right now, you can put them in if you want.
Okay. Anything else on housing?
So just to be clear, the, Mayor, the tiny houses and all of that was all taken out of here, so we don't have to worry about any of that.
And Steve, we're just going through kind of each section now. So now we're on housing.
Good.
So if you have any comments. And I gave a brief, brief summary on what the planning commission did. So anything you have to add, you know, along those lines is fine.
I will just add that demographics is a chapter before housing. And if we're going to go in order, we should probably circle back to that one.
Yeah.
So is there any, you know?
Yeah, I had a comment I had on demographics was, you know, there's a, on the policy, the planning implications under policy. It says plan for aging population. I didn't see any specific stats that broke out seniors or aging population within our stats. Other than there were 695 that lived in, by themselves in a home. You know, it doesn't address what we, you know, we have the OPC, you know, we do a lot for seniors. Of course, we have to plan for an aging population. That is a demographic trend, of course. And then kind of tying into housing, you know, I think a question that rumbles through our minds every once in a while is, you know, do we have too much senior housing, not enough senior housing? You know, we've had new developments go up. Residents say, wow, we've got an awful lot of senior housing, but do we? So I don't really see any tie in between those two, but just really wanted to speak to our senior population. So no specific action, just really a discussion.
On demographics, page 14, I saw this on the draft and I just, it says of the racial composition of the 18.3 that are members of minority groups. Then it has 7.7, 2.6, 0.2, 1.3. That doesn't add up to 18.3%. Is that a correct number?
I can verify, but there are about 30 racial composition groups. And so it might, it may be a rounding error, but I can verify those figures.
Well, I know with the 2020 census, they did the two or more, three or more. So I think just, the 18.3 is probably correct. Just the, what's after that doesn't add up to 18.3. So just, thank you.
And to that point, on the mentioning 2020, do we have those numbers to put in here from the census?
For their racial composition?
No, I'm just saying in general, the age and everything that they had received regarding our community in itself.
Yes, 2020 figures have been updated in the plan that was approved for distribution.
Okay.
Population's getting older.
Yep.
Well, that was the one interesting numbers that were in here, too, of how it showed what it was.
There's a table on page 16 that looks at 20, the title would be 20, there's 2018 figures, 2010 figures. The challenge is the 2020 decennial census does not ask all demographic questions. And so we do have to supplement some of those figures with American Community Survey figures, which is another census data source.
And to answer the mayor pro tem's question about do we have enough senior homes? You know, unfortunately, I've become a mini expert on the subject. But my impression is that these places are not that full.
No, they're not.
But is that COVID related? Or, you know, just they overshot the market? I mean, it's hard to say. Because that really, to me, COVID just stopped that whole process for a couple of years. So these places are now two thirds, or I'd say one third empty. But is that because nobody moved in for two years? And people, you know, so it's, it's pretty hard, pretty hard to say, I guess.
Well, they also say it's the cost.
Yeah, Nick?
Yeah, so I get called probably once every three weeks about potential senior housing. And how you have to look at that is you can't be Rochester centric on that. If they, it's the, the, talking to the owners of the senior housing, the, it's a regional thing. Rochester Hills pounded the region with senior housing. No one is going to build senior housing in Rochester because of the glut within four miles of us. You can just drive down Rochester Road and see four of them. And that's, so that's why you're right, Mayor, that you're experiencing they are not full. And we don't have to have every single company that has senior housing in the city of Rochester, yet they serve the greater Rochester area. So our folks might not have to live a couple of miles down the street, but there's still, not everybody lives in Rochester that was senior. So it's, it's a regional issue. And I can tell you, the market cannot handle any more senior housing. There is a glut, according to that industry at this point, in greater Rochester area. It goes all the way to Lake Orion, all the way to Oxford, actually. Avon, Oxford, they built, they built so many.
They have a lot of them. But, you know, it's like, all these chiropractors want to be in Rochester because there's money here. People, you know, to me, it's the same with the senior living. It's expensive. Well, you're going to be in the Rochester area, in the Birmingham area, in the.
You have the money to pay for services.
It's desirable.
Nick, to your point, weren't the two developments that went on hold, the one behind the Royal Park and the one on Letica, weren't those 55 and older planned communities?
Yeah. The Letica one wasn't, but the market had a million, it ended up being a million dollars a unit. Obviously, that would have been older folks. So, but yes, 55 and Boulder was more shareys that he never built.
That was an active one.
Thank you.
Right. And these builders are claiming they didn't build it because the materials were too, you know, the, it's too.
Cost went up.
The costs went way up. Again, is that too much senior thing or did the cost go up?
The cost went up. 40%.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to say.
We see it every day with the houses.
Enough on senior living for tonight.
Thank you.
All right, anything further on housing? Okay, what's the next one?
Or demographic?
On demographic, all good. Housing.
We're on land use now.
Existing land.
On the land use?
Okay, I got one. All right. So again, I focused on these, after reading through everything, I focused on these blue boxes. So in here, under policy, it states cities obsolete industrial properties. So establish consensus vision of the right blend of residential, commercial, office, and technology research for redevelopment of the city's obsolete industrial properties. So I guess I'd like to know a little bit more what those words are supposed to mean. Because I could interpret those to mean, we don't really want anyone to bring their business here that makes things. I think we like the right businesses and we want to be open for business. I mean, if someone came and said, I want to make industrial grade masks, we'd be really thrilled to have them somewhere in Rochester. But do we want the foundry in our little teeny tiny Rochester? No. So I'm just not comfortable with those words. It seems very, I'll say discriminatory against companies that make things.
Aren't they referring to obsolete industrial properties, things that were already here, like Soleronics? Yeah, that thing's, and.
A brownfield. We have several brownfields.
But to me, obsolete is, is an opportunity, right? So it shouldn't say obsolete. It should say.
I mean, we can't say opportunity zones because that's a thing.
Redevelopment of the city's industrial properties.
Well, right, because we changed the zoning on those areas. So now there's not industrial allowed in those certain areas. So those would be the obsolete ones.
And not, by many, not technically, we haven't changed any zonings yet. But what they're talking about is Troy Labs, Soleronics, the cement plant. There were some places that aren't functioning as industrial anymore. I agree, though. I don't like it portrayed as obsolete. Those are, we have people coming to Troy Labs now that are going to make high tech stuff. So you need industrial. Just because they're old doesn't make them obsolete. We don't have that many obsolete. We kind of argue with that portrayal. And I agree, it's an opportunity to go just morph into the next, whatever the next high tech industrials. But we haven't rezoned them yet, but that's the next step in creating those districts along.
Take out the word obsolete?
Maybe call it like transitioning or opportunity or something.
Well, it says redevelopment of the city's.
That's all it is, is redevelopment. It's a natural redevelopment.
Just take out obsolete?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're not going to redevelop all the industrial properties.
We don't want to. We need our industrial base.
Well, no, I know. So that's what, for uses for redevelopment of the city's industrial properties if we take out obsolete.
I just take out obsolete.
And it's under zoning as well. It's twice in that blue box. And then the other, last comment I'll have in this section is under the development review, you know, it talks about, you know, the analysis. And I would think this would be included in sustainable Rochester. So, you know, there are some comments in here relative to sustainable Rochester, but, you know, just a refresh on sustainable Rochester might be relevant when we conclude this.
Should we take out obsolete people?
Yeah.
Okay.
So one question, though. How many other industrial properties are there then? Because that would be Par pharmaceutical is an industrial property.
I guess.
They're not obsolete.
No, I know they're not. But, yeah, they're not obsolete. Those ones are not obsolete. But we're only talking about the properties that are not functioning in industrial capacity at this time, correct? functioning in industrial capacity at this time, correct?
I like, I was, I was just going to use those two words, non-functioning industrial properties instead of obsolete.
Yeah.
Just let's, just insert.
Non-functioning.
Insert that instead of obsolete. I agree.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That clarifies it.
Because otherwise, we're going to lump in everybody.
You're right.
And we don't want to lump in everybody.
Non-functioning, underperforming.
They're functioning until they're non-functioning.
And we're not calling them obsolete.
Well, there are old properties that we don't want to talk about, right? Or how about we just call them our historic industrial properties?
Restored reservation.
Underperforming is, underperforming is a good word because that's what made Troy Labs go off, that's what made Soleronics go off.
Yeah.
Underperforming, so, but look at Dylan and Upton, they didn't go out.
Right.
They just sold to somebody else and kept it going. So there's opportunities, but yeah, I like that word, underperforming. And that just says, and if they perform properly, they're not at risk anymore, they're not obsolete.
Yes.
I mean, is that why Soleronics went out? I mean, I thought.
Yeah, well, I did Soleronics.
Soleronics just wanted to expand and move to a different.
Yeah.
It's not that.
He's still out there.
Yeah, very inefficient building, that was added on so many times that it became, that one did become obsolete.
Okay.
For that, you could, what they did.
I worked for him 36 years ago.
So the two terms we discussed were non-functioning and underperforming.
Correct.
Is there a preference between the two?
Well, I would say non-functioning because these, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the properties that are no longer functioning at all.
I agree.
Okay. So moved.
Head nod.
And then you said the special projects, all that went away then, too, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah. That was the number one.
Yeah, get that out.
Planning Commission wanted to get out.
Yeah, I don't want to lose that opportunity to have special projects.
Well, I mean, you know, we talked about it. You could argue it both ways, but we felt like you have the right to say no.
Correct.
So you don't have to do it if you don't want to. So as long as there's that option, then it's just another, not to sound like the guys on TV, another tool in the toolbox.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is that what they always say about COVID stuff? So, okay, anything further on existing land use? All good? All right, on to existing thoroughfares and.
Chapter five, thoroughfares, utilities and facilities.
This is where I mentioned early on, Rowan, where you want to update the parking.
Yeah. You know what, can we stay on land use for a second? I'm sorry. Just regarding the mixed use, though, that is something that I think that has been overused and I don't think it's, from what I've seen with the developments we have here, they're not the, they're not, they're, they are underperforming, I think, for what the lifestyle of people are. I think they want to be more into regular, some type of regular residential housing instead of mixed with business. And I've been hearing that in a lot of communities, so I just, I mean, it's something that Planning Commission doesn't have to be in here, but I think it's something that the Planning Commission needs to take into consideration when some of these projects come. Because otherwise, people end up homeless in these buildings that are underperforming.
Okay. Okay, now on to existing thoroughfares and utilities.
I'm on page 61, Rowan, and that's the table 12 that needs to be updated and some of the COP wording.
Some of my thoughts in this section is, I think some of this would be good information for the whole infrastructure committee. Want to make sure that that committee gets to see this. Also, under planning implications, you know, the famous blue box, one of the bullet points says, work with Rochester Hills to share equipment to save cost on maintenance. I would think we might say regional or something because I don't think we'd only want to share equipment with Rochester Hills, maybe, you know, Auburn Hills, I don't know. I just think it's too minutia to say Rochester Hills.
Say regional, maybe.
Regional. I did, I did like the idea of mapping and tracking system for severe chronic flooding, like even in our parks, I know we've seen some things in other areas, so I was interested to see more about that. So I thought that was a good thought. And that's all for me.
Where are you referring to?
I'm in my blue box.
The blue box on page 65?
I cut it out.
Is it, is it possible, I don't know if it would help to have the updated version up on the screen?
Screen.
So we can all, because I think we're all maybe at different page numbers.
Yeah.
Is that possible, Brian?
Yeah, actually, maybe this box doesn't go with.
Is this in the packet?
Well, whatever is the latest version.
It was sent.
I obviously have it.
It's not in the packet, it's not in the packet, I doubt it.
No, went out.
Oh, I think mine were sustainability, maybe.
Yeah, because I was reading, I couldn't find where.
Yeah, you're right.
It's the one that went out, it's the draft that went out with the 63-day announcement or.
Would it have been in a Planning Commission packet that he could find on the website?
It is posted on our website for review, for public review, the master plan document.
Do you have access to the website, Brian?
Yep, yeah, let me just try to find it.
I can also email it to Brian.
It might be easier, it's tough to find out our website.
Is that the one with the Planning Commission changes already in it?
Yes.
Okay, that's the one we, I think we need.
And for the record, my comments were on a future topic.
That's all, sorry. That's okay.
That's why we couldn't follow you.
Yeah.
I see in the blue box, though, Nancy, on page 65, there's very specific numbers, increasing parking fines from $10 to $35. Is it appropriate to be that specific about numbers?
Yeah.
Or do we want to say, increase the parking fines over time and not get specific numbers?
Sorry, we took all that out, I believe, because we met with the Parking Advisory Committee, they're like, don't tell us how to run our committee. It was, at first, we thought we were going to get a full-on, take care of our parking system, but after, they did a good job evaluating it, but the results of the pack was, we haven't, it's not going privatized and we don't need that specific, it's a morphing document. Every year, we reevaluate our fee structure, what we need to have, so they didn't want that much detail in there.
Good.
Yeah, because you have charge for parking on Sundays and implement Sunday parking enforcement, which we vetoed.
Yeah. We don't like that, no.
Yeah.
Also, hire someone to do a study.
I know.
No, we did that, no.
We don't need any more studies.
Yeah, I guess I thought all that was out from.
So the Planning Commission comments will be changed.
Okay.
At the conclusion of the 63-day review, like Nick said.
Yeah, and then other one down there as well is budget, for and hire qualified consulting engineer to review the condition of the parking lots and two structures, no less than every five years.
Yeah, take that out.
Because I would hate to see us have that in there and we're spending money on a consultant every five years.
But again, that was what we kind of talked about is, just because it says it here, doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right, but we do need to know the full maintenance costs for those structures, which is something that we are working on right now.
Right.
So some of that I was okay with, I liked it, because we need that.
Brian, I did email you the document we're reviewing.
So do we already have a tenure parking asset management plan?
No.
So that would be one of our to-dos out of this master plan? Because that's what this is for, to figure out what we're going to do. Then down below.
That was their, that was their opinion, but we meet every six months or four months and go over it.
Okay.
We didn't agree. We don't need, a tenure plan's no good when you, you can't plan out parking for 10 years. There's going to be EVs and all these things. So we're going to go continue, we have a good plan, we have a Parking Advisory Committee, we're going to continue to meet and evaluate it on a, at least, once a year, council will be presented with staff recommendations as to where we're at financially, we won't need the plan for the future. So we appreciated their thoughts on that, but we disagree.
All right, so even the next thing regarding the meters going to, for payment exclusively by cellphone.
Yeah, we didn't agree to that either.
The Walker folks gave their opinion and the PAC disagreed.
I'm not seeing that.
Is there an updated of like what, what this got changed to in the Planning Commission, even just this page?
Well, right, that's what we should have.
But it sounds like they don't update it until the 63-day period is over. And then they put all the updates in.
Fine, yeah.
I didn't know that until just now.
Right, I thought what we were looking at tonight, I thought what we were looking at tonight was with all the Planning Commission changes.
Yeah.
And I guess that's not.
That's not true.
So you'll review that document at the final period when you're approving.
So do you have the, can we, if you guys want, you want to see the changes the Planning Commission made?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was asking.
Yeah, so can we bring that up, just so we can go through what was taken out? So then when we, because we did that, I mean, we did that weeks, you know, two months ago, I don't remember all of them, so.
Is that where you sent Brian?
I sent Brian the document that was approved for distribution, but I can send him our recorded summary of changes from Planning.
Yeah, there you go, that's.
Okay.
We also need to change it in there, Mayor, for the space that it's now, the parking in Lew is now 1,000 instead of 7,500.
Yeah.
Right, that's a new, that's a new change. Where's that?
Um, well.
Blue box?
66, under the, yeah.
Nancy's blue box.
Blue box.
Well, no, the blue box was a very good, helpful guide.
Yeah.
I thought it was a good one.
The red box.
And just for the record, so we, we, in the scope of work back at, and I understand this, they were very specific, if you ask us for more, you're going to pay us more because they had a pretty tight thing. That's why you're not seeing revision after revision. Blaine was trying to keep the cost down, I believe, so.
Correct.
That's fair.
I'm sure you could be micromanaged on that.
Which page would you like me to go to?
65.
Complete, yeah.
That still has those dollar amounts and everything in there.
Yep.
So I guess we don't have the version yet.
Correct. No, this is.
With the.
So can you bring that up?
He's going to send the track changes, yeah.
Yeah.
So is it a list or is it a track document?
It's a list, and there are only six items that we recorded, so I can send that or I can just go over them now, they're very short since.
Just tell us the six.
Yeah, just over.
So the six, summary of changes from the Planning Commission was to remove references to the three properties at the end of the housing chapter, so those were the three.
Private property ones we talked about.
Yep. Keep the special projects tool in aligned language in the master plan to support the tool. Remove mention of tiny homes from the master plan. Remove language recommendations that permit increased housing densities like ADUs, so that language was removed or will be removed. Odes. Remove language and recommendations that discourage the tearing down of older homes, smaller homes in Rochester's older neighborhoods. And then remove recommendations from this, remove some of the recommendations from the sustainability section.
So from a process standpoint, when the document comes before council to be approved, will it have all of these updates in it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The document that will come before council at the February 28 meeting will be about 99% or higher, but in align with all of the comments.
So on February 7th for the public hearing, it will not?
But no, it will, will be for that as well, too.
Okay.
So when Planning Commission approves for, sorry, let me clarify. The public hearing meeting on February 7th is to gather further comments from community members. Planning Commission may approve the document at that meeting or a later document contingent upon changes. If they approve it during the public hearing meeting, if there are changes that come up during the meeting, obviously, the document they approve won't reflect those changes. We will make those changes. And then all the changes will come before council, when council approves for adoption. And if council has any further changes, small grammatical or text changes, you will approve based on the conditions of those changes.
Okay.
Does that clarify any further questions about that process?
So will we have to pick through the document and try and find the changes or will they be identified for?
We can provide a summary of changes for that, for that meeting as well.
Right, because, because he just mentioned those six changes.
Yeah.
But, but within those six, there was lots of little.
Yeah.
You know, like in sustainability, there was like seven things within the one thing of sustainability. Now, a lot of them were little, things like, again, I'm just trying to recollect, you know, that all city vehicles have to be electric or something. So we said, well, you know, no, we're not going to say that right now. You know, I mean, just things like that.
They're not really using the one we currently have.
Right, so Steve, did you have any other?
Just to make sure we have a document that we don't have to guess.
Yeah.
We can provide a document that outlines summary of changes between 2014 master plan to the master plan now, summary of changes during public review as well.
Because in a way now, we're almost like duplicating what the Planning Commission did.
Right, yeah.
And there's really no point in that.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but it was cost related then, from what Nick said.
Yeah, you know, that's, but at the same time, that's, I guess, not bad for us to go through some of this stuff anyway.
It just shows that we're consistent with the Planning Commission, we have the same.
And again, these are discussions that you likely would have had during the adoption meeting as well, so having them done at this point in time is a good process as well.
Okay, so is there, is there anything else then on the existing thoroughfares and utilities?
What's a philosophy of parking?
A philosophy of parking?
It's in the same blue box, it says, for the webpage, you're going to put a, it will include philosophy of parking, and then later it says, and an overall philosophy that guides parking.
That considers if it sparks joy or not.
Is it raining that day? Do we park further away?
Fair enough. So that asked.
Nick, you, or do you have any comment?
Yeah, our park, we got compared to Birmingham, has $30 million in their parking fund, and we made it very clear as a city council that our philosophy of parking is to, to break even and maintain our lot and make it self-sufficient, that's it.
And not make money on it.
That's right.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting when the PAC took a look at this, there are a lot of cities who, that's a, that's a big revenue source, parking, so we've chosen not to do that.
Parking tickets, yep, absolutely.
But Birmingham.
Royal Oak.
Baves their streets with, you know, they have a lot, they can.
They make 30 million, they have 30 million in their fund balance for that, just for parking.
Yeah.
Wow.
Could do the community house for that, just.
I would like us to not have a deficit, though.
Right, we try to break even, that was, and have enough to make sure that we have proper maintenance. We keep it, you know, in good shape and don't have to go into special assessments or anything, just pay for itself, maintenance, operation, and reconstruction.
Right, okay.
But we did do the special assessments to begin with, when they.
That was just to share, that was a philosophy that we shared, that city council wanted to make sure everybody had some skin on their game for the first three years, and it worked out exactly how we thought, where it became sustainable, and we were almost at that 100,000 extra in the pot, and then culminated, so.
All right, on to community sustainability.
There you go, Nancy, this is yours.
Okay, all right, hold on, I'm ready for this one. This is where we want to say not just Rochester Hills, but the region. I like the concept of mapping and a tracking system, for instances of severe chronic flooding, I like the concept of mapping in a tracking system, for instances of severe chronic flooding, you know, whether that's our parks or zones. I think that's important, and again, the topic's back to infrastructure committee. And then, Mark, I appreciate the fact that you addressed the tree canopy goal, that it should be.
Let's just take that whole.
Take it out, yep. I'm good.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I actually have a concern that we have, this is from 2010, though, I don't know, what is our 2020 impervious surface, since it was thirty-six percent then? And that's, that is very concerning.
What page is that on, Ian?
Uh, very, uh, the first page, um, the community sustainability section.
Page sixty-seven.
Yeah, I think this is something that needs to be carefully looked at, because we can't continue down this path. And I would like to know where most of that's coming from, is it because we have long driveways that do the side turn garages in the rear? Is it's not just all the parking lots and everything else, it's actually how we do the zoning for all these homes? And I think that's, this is going to hurt us in the future by, if we continue down this path. But I would like to know what the new number is, ten years later.
Yeah, I'd agree, cause it makes me think about the tree canopy study, I remember when they looked at the map, they said, you know, you're never gonna get much more unless all the rooftops of your building are green roofs, so I gotta believe into that impervious number, is all those roofs in downtown, which is a percentage of our.
No, this is all just road, road and sidewalks and concrete.
Impervious surfaces would include buildings.
Yeah.
All the building, yeah, but not the, on the ground level, though, this is for the flooding and things like that.
From your report, I didn't get a sense that we had any, other than knowing we have thirty-six percent, and we have the second most impervious surfaces, or surface total, the neighboring communities, how does that, what does that mean? I mean, is that, that could be outstanding, maybe we should be up over fifty percent, I know it doesn't work that way, but what is the financial impact? What will be the long-term impact, and you said there's no data on that?
Are, are you looking for a benchmark number to evaluate that?
Well, I think in your introductory present, the presentation, you just said, there was no data on what effect that would have, right?
Oh, sure, so, yes, it, it's very hard to quantify how impervious surface impacts things like flooding, because there are so many aspects to it than flooding. If you have impervious surface, but you have a bunch of vegetative areas around the pervious surface, that's gonna significantly reduce the impacts of flooding from that site. So there's so many factors that it's very hard to kind of correlate those two measures, but we do know, communities that have higher levels of impervious surface generally experience worse floods.
So we've had a lot of flooding relative to our neighborhood cities, our neighboring cities?
I, I would say you have an increased risk.
We got all the rivers.
So is that a factor of, worth three point eight square miles versus?
Well, we actually, if you think about it like our alleys, right? Our alleys have a high flood rate if we don't have everything laid out in the sewers and everything working right, because we don't have any green space in between any of those. And then we have a big parking structure, so, and you just take one block around where the parking structure is, and it's almost all impervious surface. If you're talking building, everything, we hardly have any green space. So it's almost like having, when we go in to have new developments come into the, into our area, we need to make sure that they have a higher percentage of green space over all the impervious that's there. And I know we had something at one time, Nick, that when they're bringing their plants.
Yeah, there's two, there's two ways to handle that, or I'll give you the Birmingham model and the Southfield model. You know, you, you, you want to have more impervious, you can have more development. So you build giant underground storage tanks, so even though your area's impervious, you hold it and discharge at an agricultural rate. Every single development that comes into Rochester, since I've been here, we make sure that all the new parking lots, not homes, new commercial buildings, all have to hold water on their own site, can't just direct run into the storm sewer, and, and actually detain it to let it out at a point-two CFS, to make sure that we are not making our, our areas flashier. And the mayor said it kinda quietly, but we don't have major flood situations here, because we've had good control over our commercial elements now. As far as putting long driveways in, et cetera, that was a, that, that was something consciously that the Planning Commission did. And I was questioning that, because we are creating more impervious areas in the neighborhoods that have to directly street drain to the streets. And then if our storm sewers aren't appropriately sized, it could be a problem, we haven't run into that yet, but we're mindful of that. So you can, you can engineer, engineer your way out of impervious by putting underground storage tanks like Birmingham. The whole golf course, that fourteen mile, underground, is millions and millions of gallons of water stored, that you don't even know it's there, it's under a golf course, but, and Royal Oak did the same thing, but we have not got to that point yet, so we can, we can engineer our way out of it. You increase the storm size, we're, right now, we're dealing, we had our pre-job meeting on Rochester Road about North Main's reconstruction. We want all the storm sewers upsized, so they're not directly pouring into the bank creek, right at the, on the bridge there. So I think we're doing a good job of maintaining and, and modeling to make sure that we don't become, you know, you might be more impervious, but we're handling that water. That's the financial ramification, if you don't handle the water, then you do have flooding, and you're blowing the banks out of your river. We had Trident, even though they didn't build Miltown, they redid the whole Clint River, Mil, River basin, for a total of three million dollars, and never built anything. That's fixed now, that's how we're getting out of that area of concern for Clint River Water Show, because they fixed that before they even had to. So we did, our, our next big one is by the library, that big bank, that could slough off. So we're, we've identified those, and we're, I think we're doing a good job of preparing for those things. So it's, it's, like he said, it's complicated, lots of different ways to get at this, but we're mindful of it, all, on every single thing that we do.
Nick, is that, is impervious surfaces addressed in the sustainability report that?
It's not.
Yes, yes, well, it's one of the checklist things. You, you have to not add more percentage of impervious unless you are controlling the runoff. Not in the master plan, but in the actual checklist document.
Can we bump that up a little bit, or, or give that a little more?
That's why I said, we need to review Sustainable Rochester as a council, we have to do this.
Right, once you have every little bit, I agree.
So on, on page seventy-two, under the zoning, the first bullet point, considering what Nick just said, should that read then, break up impervious surfaces with landscaping and other engineering solutions? Or is, do you not need that?
That's an okay statement, anything you can do incrementally makes it better, so that's an okay statement.
We could add other engineering solutions, cause it doesn't just have to be landscaping.
Yes, that's correct. Oh, I thought you said that was in there, yes, we should say that.
Sorry, it's page seventy-two, yeah, we would just need to add that to that first bullet.
I would clarify stormwater engineering solutions.
Cause they're totally different.
Okay.
I mean, there's other ways, too, we, we've encouraged residents with rain barrels in, never let the water get onto the street, or even on their grass, and then use it as water. You know, so there's a bunch of different tools, like Rowan said, that you can get at this.
And even storm barrels could still be considered an engineering solution.
Yes.
Yeah, those are, but you do have, it does state on here, require roasts of a certain size to install green roasts and rain barrels. So we're going to require them to do that?
No, we, yeah, Plan, you can't take green roasts.
Oh, okay.
Well, and it says encourage.
Encourage, correct.
And then, just on that same page above, where it says, when, conduct, adopt a climate action plan.
Yeah.
We took that out. Conduct a solar suitability analysis, we took that out. Convert, I can't remember about the zoning, convert the city vehicle fleets to electric vehicles, we took that out. So I mean, some of that's, these were some of the sustainability things that we took out.
And even like converting the municipal buildings to run on renewable energy?
Yeah, I think we took that out, I mean, all those kinda things, just.
You have to have a plan for those things, and money.
Yeah.
Is there, is there sort of a catch-all statement like that here, that I'm missing, like, consider engineering solutions going forward? There's individual bits, but like underground reservoirs, rain barrels is there, could they all be combined into, you know, review this every few years or something?
I think, Beckett, they took best, they took practices around the country, which is fine in detail, but it's like apples and oranges for Rochester, so. It's okay, we started with that, and then we peeled back what we didn't think, we could not spend millions of dollars to figure out if we wanted to do it or not, right? So they, they thought at a really high level, and then we tried to bring it down to reality, so.
And then, under policy, on that same page, page seventy-two, we, you've already noted that you do not want increased tree canopy to forty percent, correct?
Yeah, we took that out.
Okay.
We can certainly try to get there, that'd be great, but it's gonna be very difficult.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone's opposed to that, it's just.
I mean, we could remove the figure that says forty percent.
Yeah, we'd like it a hundred percent.
Right.
Just put a, increase tree canopy.
Now, I, I think the bigger issue is, we're losing tree canopy just by where trees have been placed, and we're spending money to have DTE come in and, you know, trim those. And we're.
We're not spending money to do that, but that's, yeah, you're right, but that, technically, if you look at a map, and they've cut out a third of a tree, you've had decreased your canopy, but.
Yes.
That's, everybody's in that same scenario, so.
No, I know, I just think that, if, if we're going to keep talking about tree canopy, we, we need to have it stated that we're not going to allow stuff to be planted in the areas where it's going to cause this type of, you know, issue in the future of having them to be trimmed the, the way they are, and then look as bad and lose that tree canopy.
No, I agree, and since of the past, I didn't think of that back then, even, we, we do now, we'll just leave it at that.
Okay, any more sustainability? All right, on to community character.
There's no blue box for community character.
I know, I still have something to say, though. The only thing I was gonna say was, I thought that the DDA visioning session and that whole feedback loop was very effective, and, you know, there were such great ideas that came out of that session. So I thought that was excellent, so just, that's all.
I think the other thing that's going to, there's a, a lot of development going on, this would be on, on the page under preferred design of housing. The house, uh, the house footprint.
What page, maybe?
I'm trying to find.
Uh, it's going to be probably seventy-six, if I'm looking at this, it says eighty, but I believe it's seventy-six.
What's it?
It is under, it's, well, no, it's the second page in the community character.
Okay.
Yep. So.
Does the heading begin with new residential infill development?
Yes, yes, it does, correct, yep.
Okay.
Um, under there, so, one of the, right, and I know, in order to have larger homes and all of that built, we, you know, the setbacks are, are less now than they used to ever be, and that were, that, in itself, gives us more impervious surface. Because the space between the buildings is, you know, you can see some of the new construction that are going up, and you're having, it is, air conditioner to air conditioner is basically all you have, and there's, you can't even put a mower through it anymore. I think these are things that, to be mindful of our housing stock, to make it a more desirable area, to where you don't have to have issues with your neighbor. Those things need to be looked at when these homes are being built on these lots, or if any infill development from going from these small homes that had space to not much space. Also, the garage placement, I know this here, I don't know if this was taken out or not, but we've had, if you see a lot of the new developments today, they have them three-car garage and two-car garage front-facing, and people are buying them left and right. And, you know, we have such a mixed community here, cause you have front-facing garages on parts of town, in old, old town, we have just garages in the back. Most of them are detached because of the lots, but I, I think that's something, these, these things here are huge in the, keeping the character of this community moving forward by not having so many restrictions on what someone can and cannot build if they want something. I would rather see a front-facing garage than a runway of concrete going to the rear of a home. And I think that's what this document's about, so, in, in my opinion. So I would just like those to be mindful, and I know the Planning Commission doesn't get all of those, it's more for administration. But I think, moving forward, we should be a little more mindful of that.
Anything else on character? On to community engagement?
I thought, one thing, Mayor.
Okay.
It was, comes to the community character, though, in this section, there's really nothing about historic in here for character. So, you know, it talks about the residential and that, and shows difference, historic and older homes, but it's not really talking about the his, you know, it just encourages historic preservation of all structures.
How about the page eighty-one, Anne, where it talks about historic renovations?
Right here on this page? Oh, no, this page here, yes, correct, that page does. I had comments on those two.
Um, there's discussion, maybe not explicitly, but about, if you look at, on page seventy-seven, heading beginning Central Business District.
Yes.
When discussing this being a, um, commercial building design, especially in a downtown, there is explicitly mentioned to you a preference for, for one style over the other, which matches with the historic, I will say, historic character of the building, not potentially historic renovation.
Okay, so under residential, it didn't, it just does it under the other, okay.
Historic homes are generally a little hard to nail down. Zoning definitely does not get into specifically what I would, I would say, housing type, housing architecture, which would maybe signify that historic character of a substantial development.
Under the historic reservations, uh, renovations page, though, number two, you know, it just says, so these are just the standards for rehabilitation. So, uh, sec, number two, the removal of historic materials or alteration of features in spaces that characterize the building shall be avoided. And then, four, most buildings change over time, and then, that have acquired historical significance in their own right shall be retained and preserved. However, features that simply cover historic features should be removed to expose the most appropriate historic value of the building. I don't know, the, both seem to like stand out.
Aren't they saying, aren't they saying, I think that's a good statement, I think, I think they're saying, if you put paneling over a, a brick wall, don't do that. Or, or you cover up a hardwood floor from the nineteen twenties, don't do that, I, I, I think it supports what we're trying to do.
Well, in the, so I'm thinking of like the ceilings and that, and some of the historic buildings, but this is, these are only going to be for the historic buildings in downtown. It's not, we're not taking into account any historic residential, then.
Sort of like what they did at that building where the Fedexes, where they pulled off all the silver and showed up, you know, what, what was underneath that, it was a great change.
Yeah, the box says in the downtown, it's kinda focused on that, not on residential, so I, I don't know if there's a section for residential that, some of that could be added, or?
No, and I just, this is, and this says in the downtown, too, and we're not taking into account the other historic buildings that we have in the city.
The one we talk about a lot right now, that one?
Well, that one and some other ones that are, you know, considered historic, even, you know, if you wanted to, the community house, and the first part of, you know, certain structures.
All right, we can remove, you know, the, the first sentence on the, on page eighty-one, that historic renovation box, we could just remove, those, those last three words, in the downtown.
Oh, so that way, then, would be broader and apply to the area?
That would, that would be good, so then we, we're.
Good.
And then plug a picture of the Harrison Building, they're too obvious.
Well, no, that one there, that's, there is an awesome building, do you know that when the baseball teams used to take the trains there, when the Grangers used, and all them used to play a long time ago, and they used to have lunch up there after the game?
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah.
Whittles.
Yep.
Okay.
But what do, I guess, my question is, how are we going to utilize, like, this here? Because this here would be specific as to, with any thing being done to any historical building, correct? Because this, these would be, we're not using it as a guideline, we're just have it there in our master plan, for what purpose? Because we have a lot of, you know, shall not cause any. any damage to the historic materials, you, you don't do those things, so, how, if it's going to be in, in this document, how are we going to use it or not use it?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep, go right ahead.
So you all know, you went through this, and you guys did not, not you necessarily, but previous councils did not agree to do overreaching historic districts. We have a lot of old homes in town with history, but they are not historic structures, by the way you have to protect, to protect them, you have to create the district and put the restrictions on there. No one's, we've not done that, even the elevator's not protected, even the school board building isn't, so, this, no one's made that crossover where you're putting your foot down and saying, you shall not touch your historic, what, what's, where, what's historic, nineteen fifty before, nineteen, eighteen hundreds? We've encouraged it, but no council has taken that giant step to say, we're gonna be Savannah, Georgia, and you shall not touch a building that's older than whatever. So, that's a whole different discussion, this master plan is just a document, like you all said, to guide you, it doesn't hold your feet to the fire, so if you wanna go that route, you have to go back to the historic district designations and fight that fight publicly, so, this document will not help you, Anne, on preserving anything historically that doesn't have a district, I think we've only got five, right? Couple of homes have volunteered in, so, an old bakery, so, just, I just want you to note that.
Okay, so then, shouldn't all the shells be should? If this is not something we're.
Yeah, I, yeah, I had to look, I don't know, yes, if there's a shell, not touch a house in a master plan, doesn't mean anything, so, they should not be should, right? Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't part of all that, DTE.
Yeah, I mean, I was part of all that, and it was clearly nobody wanted to have a contiguous, contiguous historical district.
Right.
There was just no.
That's correct, and I agree, and we did, that was, yes, and we made that very clear. You could opt in if you want, but don't, we're not forcing anybody.
Well, and, and the re, and the hardest part with that whole situation is because you have a group of people who are going to tell Mark or Nancy how they can do their renovations on their home.
Yeah, I'll never agree to that.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's what I mean, that's why, that's the hard part of that, because Rochester Hills has it, and it's really hard to even maintain your own home when you have that, so, I understand for anything of significant, significant history, um, or that has had a designation, I think those are where, you know, people can be very mindful once you get a designation of what to do.
Yeah, I'm pretty, we should be proud of, look at, I think Mark just said it, look what he did at the old Gateway Center, it was just a suggestion, and they took it and they brought back some history there, we did with Posco's buildings, we've done it on, planning commission tries to work with historic people to say, if you have pictures, can we help you, maybe you can get tax credits, you know, from privately, so, they've done a, they're very mindful of trying to preserve the history, especially in the, you know, in our industrial, or, I'm sorry, our retail buildings, and they've done, I think we've done a good job of Main Street, some of you can't, some don't look right behind it, but we, they've done a good job of doing that, we're doing it right now, uh, and some of them are restoration, some of them are rehabilitation, so there's, you know, different values, but they, you guys should be proud of, we've made some big differences without forcing anybody's hand, where we tell you, you can't do that, um, it's been pretty successful.
It is kind of crazy, I do miss that old building that used to sit there.
Brian, we're on page eighty-one, if you wanna.
I will say some of these standards can also be applied to the development review processes, I'm sure Nick can, can talk to you, um, planning commission can, you know, require or ask for some of these things.
And they do.
All right, so are we on to future land use intensity and design plan now?
Uh, community engagement, chapter eight, any comments there?
Thumbs up.
Oh, good.
I do, yeah, I do think even on the table with the responses, I think that, uh, it shows that Rochester offers a variety of the housing options, I think that those numbers were very high.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, which, so people are happy with what we have here for the multi-generational residents.
So is that for future land use?
No, that was on feedback.
No, I thought you moved to the next one.
Yeah, community engagement, chapter eight.
Yeah, community engagement, yeah.
I'm sorry, I skipped ahead of that.
No, that's okay, I was like, all right, so future land use, then, so, thank you, for all of those that participated, I think that was great information.
Okay, so future land use now, comments?
Only comment I have is that the skyline test is mentioned there in a, a blue box, but a different blue box, uh, so it stands out, and I think that is important, you know, when you talk to people about preserving the character of our downtown, that, you know, that we always point to the skyline test, and so I, I think that's just important, happy to see it in there.
Except probably when you're on the bridge and you know that another development's going to come in and you won't see past the skyline, you won't be able to see the skyline unless the other, uh, project comes in under Walnut, 'cause it's going to be, it's going to appear higher than what we already have there. But no, it should be in there for everything, but it depends on where you're looking.
Anything further on future?
For the.
Going one, I just can't.
And I, I don't know if we talked about this, did we talk about the recommendations from the county?
Yeah, there was gonna be my discussion point, we should talk about recommendations.
Good.
I'll wait.
All right, on to implementation strategies and opportunities.
Sorry, Mayor, it's the recommendations for the county for the future land use plan we should probably discuss?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, oh, yeah, I can do those, uh.
I'm missing.
That came in that separate memo.
Okay.
Um, Brian, would you mind switching back to the Rochester presentation and then going to the future land use map in that PowerPoint?
And oh, one was the school board building they bought, state school board, not, or state administrative offices, because the one in Dequindre, when we did this, we didn't know they were buying the building, so, um, I think that was one of them, Rowan.
It was interesting, they bought the building, but they didn't buy the land.
Not all of it.
Correct. That could still, it's the one.
It's odd, really.
Five ten. Thank you. So the comments the county has here, um, you'll see the, the two boxes with the same arrows, it might be a little hard to see from here, but it is labeled A1, the two boxes in the northwest, the, kind of, right along the steep border there, a comment from Oakland County regarding these two properties, uh, two religious properties have been changed to public quasi-public, to single-family residential, which is appropriate, um, A2, which is the box if we're moving around the northern border of the city's edge, um, right along the river there, uh, property that is commonly known as the Van Hoozen Farming is currently owned by the city of Rochester Hills and has been changed from recreational open space to public quasi-public, which matches the function, uses and ownership of the property, county approves of that, uh, A3, which is the very northeastern corner of the city, um, that callout is in reference to a property that was classified as recreation open space surrounding the Maple Ridge Creek Village condo development, the Pleasant Creek Village subdivision and other similar developments, which has been reclassified on this future land use map to single-family and two-family residential, uh, it appears that much of this land was a part of the subdivision planning and is currently owned and managed or controlled by the condominium development, this change, uh, is supported by Oakland County. Moving, uh, to the southeastern corner of the city, B1 callout, which is leading from the, the box at the top of the legends down to the smaller red callout, this is a property that is occupied by the Ice Rinks complex that was built in the late nineteen nineties and had a future land use designation of public and quasi-public in the twenty-fourteen plan, a proposed change to multifamily mixed residential is being proposed, which would allow the property to change as necessary, adjacent and across the Dequindre Road corridor and Shelby Township is moderate density residential, this is compatible with, uh, the neighboring zone and your other jurisdictions. Uh, B2, which is the callout, which is on the southeastern border of the city, the very large callout, a large unimproved property which follows the Clinton River and remains owned by a company, Letica Corporation, that closed their headquarters located on an adjacent property in twenty-twenty, this one hundred and twenty-acre site is proposed to change its future land use designation, the properly, property containing the building was purchased by Rochester Community Schools in twenty-twenty-one, and due to the assumed use to be quasi-public, quasi-public or office, the future land use classification has remained research technology, Rochester, Rochester's community schools did not purchase the adjacent property, the change of plume designation for the larger unimproved property, which is mostly in the floodway, aligns itself with the current zoning map, these properties are adjacent to mixed residential in Shelby Township, um, Oakland County recommends this be changed to, um, park, recreation and open space. And then moving into B1, which is the northernmost callout on the west side of the city border, at the major intersection, this is a religious property fronting University Drive, had a designation of public and quasi-public, and is proposed change to multifamily mixed residential. B2, which is the, the middle callout on the western border of the city, the Hidden Hills condominium complex is in the city of Rochester Hills, but a small portion of the eastern edge of the development is in the city of Rochester, this small portion has a plume designation of public quasi-public, and is proposed change to multifamily mixed residential in accordance with the development and that location. And then finally, the final callout on the very southwestern corner of the city, a property which is currently in the Rochester Community School system and had a plume designation of public and quasi-public, and is proposed change to single-family residential, all changes on the western border appear to, are vetted and are compatible with future land use designations in the U.D., adjoining jurisdictions.
That's McGregor Elementary?
Yep.
Why?
So we're. Go ahead, Nick.
Sorry. Yeah, the county's right on all these, they're just good catches, they, yeah, they just were mislabeled as we went through all of this, so, I would agree with all of them.
Yeah, and BRI supports all the comments from that county.
All right, so I have, I have a dumb question, I have a dumb question, so, on the one, I'm gonna call it the ice rink, so that's B1, so B1, they're saying it should be changed to multifamily mixed residential, but that's not what's there right now, right now, it's, it's an ice rink, so why do we change the, the zoning or the map? I, I don't get it.
Because multifamily.
I didn't catch that, and that one's wrong yet, is that the one that they're, should, okay, if it says that, I missed that one, because that should just stay, what, what, it's.
Well, this is B1, and it's, it's currently public and quasi-public in the twenty-fourteen master plan, I mean, that's what it is, right?
Yeah, the onyx.
Proposed change is multifamily mixed residential.
And that's because that's what's.
It should not be that.
So why, yeah, why would we wave our magic wand and change that?
We would not, you know, my, my box for the, I couldn't see that, so, you're, on that one, you're a hundred percent, that should, it's a private, it's not even public, quasi-public anymore.
Are they referring to the townhouse right to the, next to the?
No, they're thinking that because that piece of property right there could be multifamily, 'cause you have multifamily right next to the onyx, that's the only thing I can think of as to why they would want to change that, but.
We should not change that.
No, and then, I, I don't think that McGregor should be changed either, that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it follows the same logic.
Yeah, why would you do that?
I mean, you got a school building there, why would we rezone that?
Yeah.
I must not have heard, right, you're right, we would not.
Okay, 'cause I'm, like, ready to, like, they can't, they can't build there anyhow, remember? McGregor's off limits to anyone building anything, that was deeded with certain restrictions and it can never be built on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I, if I, I misunderstood anything, that is what it is today, leave it like it is, we, we don't need to change any of those, I missed that.
All right, so that bottom corner can't change.
And then another change on the future land use map is we will add the special projects over late in twenty-fourteen.
Oh, that'll be good. The other thing that's not in here, um, under this section, I guess, I guess they, um, it's under historic preservation, the state came out and they are now, um, have historical grants now, too, so, we have options for that.
What section are we on?
Same one, that, community engagement.
Okay.
Oh, I, are, are we not on chapter nine, future land use?
Yeah.
That's where I thought we were at, yeah.
That's, well, that's what I was on, yeah.
Okay.
That's in there.
The section of this document that begins with implementation.
Is that the last?
Implementation strategies and opportunities.
Right.
That's where we are now.
So we are now in chapter ten, beginning on page one-ten.
Okay.
Anybody?
Any comments, yeah, but Commissioner, Commissioner, I see, Councilor Peterson, who's working in townships.
Council member.
On, on page one-thirteen, uh, sustainability, um, Amanda had suggested breakup impervious services with landscaping, and I said, I would think it was other reengineering, blah, 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 whatever we said in that one section should be on that page also, four down under sustainability.
Yeah, engineering, alternative engineering solutions.
Yep. Just so it mirrors the other one.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add, I know we've made some changes along the way to this, so I think we've talked about them all for me.
Yeah, so you'll go through on each one of these and, like, get rid of obsolete and put the other word in on this action plan, then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So when, when will we get the final document for us, so everybody has a chance to take the final? Look at it.
Um, I, um, let me think about the process a little bit more.
It's gotta be ready by the seventh, right?
Right.
So the, the, the public hearing document that will go for the seventh is the document that you are reviewing now, the document that has been approved for distribution is what will be reviewed at the public hearing on the seventh, the public hearing is merely an opportunity for general public members to come before the planning commission in an open meeting to provide comment, and then planning commission will take those comments, you will revise the document with comments discussed here, comments discussed previously by planning commission, comments from Oakland County, and any comments that come up during that, uh, February seventh, planning commission make, make revisions, um, planning commission can either approve the document contingent upon those revisions at that meeting or a later meeting, and then, once the document has been updated, approved by planning commission with those changes, it will come before you, you have final approval on, on the master plan document, you can again approve it based on conditions if you have any additional comments.
So if the meeting's the twenty-fourth, when are we gonna get that, like, a week before?
It'll come with your packet, yeah.
That's three days before.
Uh, it, it should be ready, you know, after planning commission has approved it, um, so it can come before you earlier.
I think that's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Your twenty-eighth, yeah.
But we have a planning commission on the.
Seventh.
Seventh and the seventeenth, right?
Yes, we have a special planning.
Special.
Special planning commission.
Special.
So there was another recommendation from the county that I forgot to bring it up, it, when we were talking about the sustainability section, the community, so, I'm not familiar with this, uh, Michigan Natural Features Inventory Map, uh, and I was gonna ask you, Nick, if that's something that you're aware of, and is it something we should incorporate in the master plan?
If we can get it for free, sure.
Okay. The Michigan Natural Features Map will include areas that have been designated as high-quality. as high-quality habitat, especially for threatened or species of concern.
We should definitely have that.
Can we get it for free?
Um, you have the county says we can, so.
Sure.
All right.
Make it so.
Mr. Mayor, my, my worry is the 7th, we, we're going to send this packet out tomorrow. I, it could, that would be nicer. It could be, I don't want to, I don't want to jam them. This was all, Mr. Wayne put this together, they, you had it done at a certain date. I would hope that after the comments, they should ask the same questions you all are asking. Where's the change? We're not going to have those for them. So, unless Rowan does his whole presentation on the 7th, the meeting, the special meeting is to talk about the implementation of the zoning requirements. So, we could fall back to that meeting if we needed to, if they have more questions, but they legitimately could say, "Actually, we're not seeing all this stuff." This is an awesome discussion you all are having, but the planning commission's not going to get the benefit of this, because it's got to go out the next day or so. So, it's kind of been jammed here at the end, but we'll do our best. But Rowan, you might have to go through this again with the planning commission, so they understand where's all their comments and where's the council comments. If they're going to actually adopt it, the 7th, they're doing it blind, you know, I worry them a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's not good.
Yeah.
It's not good. That's not fair.
Everyone's going to...
And we didn't do that because we didn't want to spend the money?
No, Mr. Wayne wanted to get this done fast. So, I, usually you have a lot more time in between the planning commission and...
Because we, because we made these...
...
We made these planning commission changes a month ago.
Right.
More than that.
So, I don't know why...
But you know, we're at these, what I'm saying is, you've added stuff tonight, that's awesome. They should see what you added tonight.
Right.
Rowan, if you can, we can do that and just verbally present that to them Monday, like you said, they can accept it without seeing it in writing, unless you can pull this off. I don't want to speak for Beckett if they can pull this off in writing by...
Nick, what Beckett Reader can provide is a summary of what was discussed at this meeting for planning commission. So, planning commission can review, pretend, future edits that were discussed at this meeting, although they will not be edits in the actual document.
And I'll put in the packet that that's coming as soon as we can get it, you know, and it'll be a separate document. That'd be great.
I just think next time though, after the planning commission reviews it, since they have to do everything with zoning, we should be reviewing it right exactly after that. I mean, no time, we should be doing it ahead of time, and then it would have probably worked a lot better.
I mean, I'm, I'm not criticizing anybody, but this is not a good way we're doing this.
Well, planning commission approved it in October.
Right.
Yeah, but we're the ones who pushed it out.
It came to us November 23rd.
Right.
And we forced the issue to have this meeting to be able to go over it, so, and that's what I'm saying, we should have just done that. We should have done this sooner.
I think we tried to, then, then there was COVID.
Well, no, I understand that with certain things, but...
And we should have had the changes from the planning commission here.
Yeah.
We did. And then, when they're not, and then when we meet the planning commission, they're not going to have the changes that they did either.
Yeah, they're going to say, "Why are we looking at this?"
Yeah, I mean, it's like a ridiculous process.
So, if we don't have access to the changes in a suitable amount of time for review, and we choose not to adopt the master plan, does the 63-day process just start over?
No, it's, it's over, that's already, it's over. I believe we're on January 26th, that actually closed. That's just, that's just an obligation. We can, you can delay this 100 years if you wanted to. I mean, it's...
Okay, right.
We've got to get it right. We need to get it right.
As, as we say in the planning profession, there's no planning police. Nobody's going to...
Right, okay, good.
This process takes an additional month or so.
Need to get this right.
But, but is there an additional cost for you to do, to, was that the reason?
Yes, as consultants, of course, we have a scope of work that, that if we exceed, there's additional costs.
Well, city manager should have let us know more about that, so we could have planned this more accordingly then. I think we could have had all of our thoughts and concerns given to the planning commission, since they were the ones who to, you know, really approve based off a zoning of what their specialty is. I think that would have worked even better to where, then right now, we would be sitting with that final draft.
And I think the one we did before, last time we did it, we didn't have any of these meetings. It just was approved. That's my recollection.
Well, the time before we did, we had a lot of meetings.
Maybe that's why you didn't put them in.
I think that's why it was called Master Plan 2025. That's when they thought it'd get done.
Let's call it Master Plan 240, I don't know.
Right, that's a good comment.
Any, any other questions, comments?
Just, just, Rowan, the appendix, you'll have appendix D, which will be the non-binding resolution. And I sent you the tree canopy, you can make that appendix E if...
And the non-binding resolution is the Harrison Building?
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes, that's what we call it.
Amanda Harrison Building.
No, that's what we call it.
Yes.
That's what we call it.
And then, recent action taking, taken on parking, that will be in your agendas and minutes posted to the website as well.
Yeah, and the parking in Lew as well, because you wouldn't have known that one either.
We will include those documents in the, in the appendix.
All right. Anything further tonight? Any points for the good of the order, as we used to say?
No, I think, I think you, you for doing such a great presentation on this.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight.
I think this was nice. I think reading through this, that there's a lot of extra information in there. A lot of other communities don't have this much. They have some really good, just different descriptions, really going into their specific community without adding in all the extra. And I know because we're kind of sit in the middle of a bunch of communities, it makes sense to have all the additional. So, I think it was very well done. I think it was very updated compared to some in the past that we've had, that were not as updated.
And I think it's good that we all took a look at it kind of collectively, never...
It's, it's good I did have this meeting.
Never hurts, right?
And Brian did a good job of pivoting and getting stuff on the screen for us, so thank you, Brian.
And hey, we had a free Monday night anyway, right? I mean, anything further?
No.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, right on time.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Hey, we're going to get a couple day snow day anyway, right?